Good morning. This Thursday, July 5th, 2018, regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners will come to order. If you'll please join me in a brief moment of silence. And now if you will stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Welcome, everybody. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are our recognitions. Cliff?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd first like to call on Fire Chief Kevin Zorick to come up and present our newest firefighter, EMT Tyree Hughes.
Tom Manager, if you would, Deputy Chief Height will be doing that interview today.
Okay. Very good.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to introduce our new firefighter, EMT Tyree Hughes. Tyree? Tyree comes to us with experience as a volunteer and career firefighter. He first joined the Moayoc Fire Department in 2011 and started the training process to become a Certified Firefighter Level Two, EMT Basic, and Emergency Vehicle Driver Operator. He was hired by Currituck County as a firefighter EMT in 2016. Tyree currently resides in Powell's Point and will be getting married soon to his fiancee Lauren, who couldn't make it today. And Tyree's off time. He likes to hunt, fish, cook, and is still a volunteer firefighter, but now with the lower Currituck Volunteer Fighter Department. Tyree is excited about his new career and looks forward to a long career with the town. Tyree, congratulations and thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Next we have Finance Officer Amy Miller will present five years of service to Deputy Finance Officer Kim Blankenberg.
My right-hand lady, Kim Blankenberg, AKA Kim B., as everybody calls her. She's a true leader in our department. She has served as the interim Finance Director and is knowledgeable, well-rounded, and well-respected by everybody in our department as well as within the whole town. She has an open mind and welcomes and suggests ways to streamline and improve procedures. Because she understands the relation and working of all functionalities of finance, she is able to implement creative solutions for best practices and moves forward with bringing ideas and visions and becoming reality. She is not only in charge of managing all of our conversions we are doing right now, which if I skip any, just let me know, but they include the general ledger conversion, which has been a huge success, tax conversion, utility conversion, business license conversion, credit card conversion, timekeeping conversion, and helping with the planning conversion, cashiering, and credit card processing, in addition to everything else. Everybody has been working hard to make work more streamlined. Kim is not afraid to pull up her sleeves and work hard, and all this hard work has been seen, it's paid off, and I have a feeling things will always be improving, evolving, and dynamic in our department. As I know Kim doesn't like to be complacent, although that might sound good for now to take a little bit of break. Because of her professional accomplishments, including becoming a Certified Local Government Finance Officer during her time with the town, I'm able to pull her into more difficult projects, as she was instrumental in helping with the CAFR, redesigning the budget and the CIP, and she is also my proofreader, as that is not my strength. We take, as we do take great pride in the quality of our work that's distributed to the public. Kim is also a great teacher. She was a teacher. One thing that I think is great is she's able to explain to staff why we do what we do, the importance of their role, and how it relates to the bigger picture. That creates a sense of inclusion, empowerment, and pride for our staff. Finance is definitely not an island. We work largely with the public and other departments. Kim is highly professional, is able to independently help others solve problems, and determine solutions or give guidance. Kim takes ownership of her responsibilities. She's been instrumental in bringing engaging work and projects to our staff and department. Because I know I can rely on her, we are able to challenge ourselves and our staff to better serve others and take a look at how we really need to do things from a fresh perspective. I think it's fair to say, together we have wiped the slate clean in our reinventing goals and expectations on what is really important and how to do business better. And I'm very thankful that I have you by my side, and thank you for your service, and I look forward to many, many years.
If you would, please come up and recognize our Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height for his 15 years of service.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. It's certainly a privilege and an honor to be here before you all today to recognize Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Safety Officer, and many other jobs that remain unmentioned, Shane Height. Shane is here with his family today, he's here with girlfriend Stephanie, Amber, Mom Lynette, Abby is here, and I think Jackson's rolling around somewhere back in there. They took up the entire back row, so we figured we'd have them do that. Shane began with the town in 2003, and he will tell you that his original fire career started back in 1991, but I would submit that Roberta, if you would, that his fire career started in 1981 with his father in Clarksville, Virginia. Shane was an integral piece of his father's life, and I know his dad was very influential in kind of guiding and directing him as a mentor into the fire service. And there's a great shot of him right there on the tailboard, and doggone, if you can't tell, that's him. So Shane was five years old there, and obviously the fire service and mostly his dad had a lot of him, for sure. Most recently, I recognized Shane with the Board of Commissioners for his graduation from Fayetteville State University undergrad in Fire Science Management and for his North Carolina Fire Investigator. So he's no stranger to achievements and seeking above and better and beyond for the town. Shane is an excellent and professional leader. He functions well under extreme pressure, as you might imagine. In a collaborative environment like the fire service, when we have 50 to 60 people working on scene at a structured fire, automobile accident, whatever it might be, he does a very, very good job with coordinating and commanding control. And so he is my right-hand when it comes to operations in the town of Nags Head and does an excellent, excellent job. He believes in lifelong education. He's applied to the National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Training School, and he should, this attests to his interest in his professional growth and development. He's not sitting back and resting on just what he's done so far. He's looking at doing more and more. Shane is the safety guy in town. It's not easy to be the safety guy in town. He visits each department, manages the Safety Committee, and sometimes when they see Shane walking through the door, people say, "Oh, my gosh, what have we done now?" And usually there's something that can be improved on, and Shane's that guy to say, "Okay, we can make some changes here, and we can make it a better work environment for all of our employees from the health and safety perspective." So, and he understands that injury prevention and the financial savings that go along with that are good for the town. He also manages the OSHA SHARP process annually, the Safety Health Achievement Recognition process, and so does a great job with that and working collaboratively with OSHA Consultative Services. Shane understands the value of future fire planning, community risk reduction, making sure that our houses stay salient, our businesses stay open, assisting target populations, our special needs people, our tourists, and our citizens, using research and analysis reporting data. He is very good with researching into emergency reporting, our tracking system, and telling us what types of calls we're having, how quickly we're getting to them, and also how we can do a better job at reducing those hazards. Shane's got a simple strategy, and he tells this to the staff on a regular basis. Treat everybody in the community like they're your family, and you can't go wrong. And with Shane's relationship with his family, he certainly does that. His outreach extends to the rest of the community, and I think everyone realizes that and appreciates him when he shows up on scene. He's sat for hours with the family of individuals who may have lost their lives and counseled them and been with them, so they can kind of get over the beginning phases of their grief and help them to get ready for their next step. He's dedicated to the organization and understands the connectivity to life safety. And most recently, and we'll talk about it in August, I believe, Shane was the architect of the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal Assessment, Fire Protection Class Rating Assessment that brought the town a two. We are the highest rated fire department in Dare County as a result, largely in part due to Shane's efforts and what he did to rally all of the records. And of course, this started two years ago approximately, and we were able to get the equipment and assets necessary to successfully go through that inspection. If I had a dime for every time another fire service person in Dare County asked me, "What did you all do, and how did you make it work so well?", and I refer him to Shane. And so he's a very much needed resource. He's a professional leader, and he's capable of performing all the administrative duties here in town, which includes rolling up his sleeves. Quite often I see him, and he's in the bay helping the crew work on apparatus. He can do it all. He's ethical, he's justice-oriented, understands teamwork and encouraging us to all accomplish our goals and objectives. He's one of the respected and admiration of the entire department and his fire service peers here in Dare County. Again, he has a wonderful family. Shane is probably one of the best dads of well-respected family men that I know. And I will tell you that it's difficult with a fire service schedule to keep your family as a priority, but he does it. He does it successfully. I think Deputy Fire Chief Height has a bright future in the town of Nags Head, and it's my pleasure to congratulate him here today.
And then last, ask Police Chief Kevin Brinkley to come up and help proclaim National Night Out, which is Tuesday, August 7th.
Thank you, sir. Our annual National Night Out event is coming up on Tuesday, August 7th. Again this year, we are thankful to be back at the Ark Church, which is on the corner of Villa Dunes Drive and 158. This year's event, we hope to top last year. Last year, we had a really, really good event. This year, we do have Dare Med Flight that will be there, our county's new medical ambulance helicopter will be on scene. Last year, it was the Coast Guard. This year, we've got Dare Med Flight. United States Fish and Wildlife Service are bringing over some displays as well. Businesses and the people that are joining us there are listed on the flyer, which is also posted online. Hamburgers and hot dogs will be served with all the trimmings, so we hope that it's going to be a great time and hope that everybody can come join us. Begins at 5:00, ends at 7:00, and we know that it's going to be a great time. Mayor, I believe you've got a proclamation as well?
I do, and before I read the proclamation, I'll say I was able to attend last year, and it was a pretty fantastic event. It was very well attended. It was great for the families and children who were able to be there, and just a really nice event. So we do have our proclamation for National Night Out 2018. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, called National Night Out. And whereas the 35th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the town of Nags Head to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Nags Head Community Watch Association plays a vital role in assisting the Nags Head Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the town of Nags Head and is supporting National Night Out 2018 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the town of Nags Head be aware of the importance of crime programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in the town of Nags Head. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I do hereby call upon all citizens of the town of Nags Head to join the Nags Head Community Watch Association and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 35th Annual National Night Out on August 7th, 2018. Further, let it be resolved that I, Ben Cahoon, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, as National Night Out in the town of Nags Head, Dare County, North Carolina, this the 5th day of July, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to seeing everyone there on August 7th.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we typically make a motion to adopt those proclamations? I believe we do.
You usually.
Yes, okay. So a motion to adopt and approve that proclamation would be in order?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just before we leave recognition, I just wanted to extend my appreciation and thanks to all the public, safety, fire, and police, as well as the Public Works Department for their work last night and putting on the town's fireworks. I appreciate all their time, energy, and effort, and most importantly, for keeping everyone safe and not blowing a hole in Andy's peers. So thank you.
Especially the last time, not blowing a hole in the peer. Yes, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board will receive public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment to the Board of Commissioners on matters that they have an interest in. Those addressing the Board are asked to address their comments to the Board as a whole. The public comment period is not an opportunity to engage in a dialogue with any particular member of the Board of Commissioners. Also, the Board rarely responds to public comment, and in addition, if there are matters that people wish to comment on that are scheduled for public hearing later in the agenda, you may want to reserve your comments until that actual public hearing. Those members who wish to address the Board, please keep your comments within a five-minute limit. All right, at this time, anybody who wishes to address the Board, if you'd please approach the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and address your comments to the Board as a whole. Anybody? All right, at this time, we will conclude and close the public comment session.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I have two corrections to minutes that are within that consent agenda. The first is from the June 11 workshop. About two-thirds of the way down the first page is the sentence, "Board members discuss their interest in getting neighborhood multi-use connectivity first to the parks." I believe that should read, instead, "Board members discuss their interest with the completion of Doughty Park and moving forward with neighborhood multi-use connectivity." And then the second would be from the June 20 meeting on page 11, under the Mayor's agenda. It reads that he noted, speaking of me, that he has been fighting, that's for 20 years, and that is not correct. It should be noted that we have, meaning the town, have been fighting for 20 years. And so, Board members, with those two corrections to those minutes, when you make a motion on the consent agenda, it will include those corrections. So now a motion on the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
May I make a note?
Yes.
Usually, a lot of towns make a big statement about their tax collection rate, and in the consent agenda we just approved, we had a collection rate, I think of like 99.994.
Yes.
And I'd like to make a note for the public that a collection rate of 99.994 is a pretty high collection rate.
Pretty outstanding.
It is amazing and a credit to our staff. And I did, and thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate you doing that. I noticed it was, I think, on the general fund, it's a hundred-and-some-odd dollars that's uncollected, and then a handful of dollars on the MSD. It's a tiny amount of money.
We just go through the consent agenda because it's easy, but sometimes there are things worthy of bringing out and noting.
They are indeed, and thank you for bringing that one out. Appreciate that very much. The next item on the agenda would be Item F, Public Hearings. Turn it back over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider a conditional use site plan application submitted by Thomas and Patricia Bonday for the construction of a private dock. On this matter, I remind the Board that the Board sits as a quasi-judicial body to hear this, and that means that certain rules and requirements apply to the Board's decision. First, the applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. Procedures of the ordinance must be followed. Board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing, but questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from one of the sworn witnesses once they are recognized and allowed to speak. Secondly, when a public board sits as a quasi-judicial panel to decide a conditional use application, it is imperative that no member participate in or vote on the matter in a manner that would violate any affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision-maker. Impermissible violations of due process include, but are not limited to, a board member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not susceptible to change, receiving undisclosed ex parte communications, and/or having a close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. Previously undisclosed ex parte communications which have not caused you to develop a fixed opinion may be cured through the disclosure of the facts or information that you've obtained on this record. A party or member of the Board, including the member at issue, may object to any member's participation for lack of impartiality. If an objection is raised to a Commissioner's participation and that member does not choose to recuse himself or herself, the remaining members shall by majority vote rule on the objection. So at this time, I ask whether any of you have any conflicts which would potentially keep you from being an impartial decision-maker, or have you received any undisclosed communications or information that you would like to disclose at this time?
Mr. Leidy, I do know the applicants, but I do not have any impartial information.
So Commissioner, would you be able to make your decision based solely on the evidence that is presented in this hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Based on that, I don't see a need for Commissioner Sears to be recused. Is there anybody else who has, yes, ma'am?
I've known Tom and Trish for many, many years, as they were in a previous business that did business with my business. We've not done business for many, many years since they left, unfortunately, but I feel totally impartial in ruling on this matter.
Okay, all right. And anyone else? All right, very good. Okay, one more thing I'd like to cover before we get started. The Board's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence in view of the record as a whole. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during the hearing. While you may be presented during this hearing with copies of unworn statements contained in letters, emails, and the like, such unworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that's presented during the hearing. Unsworn evidence, such as letters or emails, cannot be used as the sole basis for your decision. So at this time, with that background, I would ask that those individuals who plan to present evidence in relation to this application, if you will please approach the town clerk so that she can administer the... And at this time, we will begin the presentation of evidence, starting with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Deputy Planning Director Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As noted, this is a conditional use application being made by Thomas and Patricia Bonday. They own Lot 8 of Lone Cedar Village. There's an aerial up on the screen of this parcel. As you can see, it does have water access here. This property is located in an R1 zoning district, and the code allows someone to construct a private dock as an accessory structure upon their lot. Even if there is not a principal structure currently existing, in all other districts within the town, you may only have an accessory structure. If you have a principal structure, the R1 is separate from that. You can have your private dock, but you do have to go through the conditional use process. And the conditions for that use requirement were included in your packet. In terms of lot coverage, there's obviously no implication with lot coverage in this request. Everything is water-dependent. Building height, architecture, parking, buffering, the things that we usually talk about with regard to commercial site plan, it also doesn't apply in this situation. There was no need for a fire review or a public works review on this, so that has been addressed. The primary condition of the zoning code in allowing a dock as an accessory use is that there is a KAMA permit issued for the construction of the private dock, and the Bondays have received their KAMA general permit from Elizabeth City. So that is currently in place. That being said, staff feels like they've met all the conditions of the conditional use requirements. Staff would recommend approval as presented, and the planning board, when they heard this at their main meeting, they also recommended approval of the proposal as it's being presented. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and obviously, Ms. Bonday's opinion.
All right, do the members of the Board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
I'll just ask a quick question. I know, and it's all related to KAMA and the setbacks, but the house on this, to the bottom of the lot being proposed, and you've given us a picture of something that shows where that property with the house would be able to put a dock out, but it just seems like, knowing how the KAMA rules work, it could cause a squeeze on the house to the bottom on putting a dock out. Can you just bring up the picture that you provided to us to show how that works and how far it is?
Let's see. I think our KAMA permit's going to have that information there.
I mean, it's an actual photograph... I mean, it's an actual photograph that y'all used. It was in our package.
If he's got it, it should be on the website.
Yeah, it should be.
One of the attachments. Okay.
Let me ask it a different way. That's the one. But let me ask it a different way, then. Did that adjoining property owner have any comment? Because I didn't see any comment.
He will.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, okay. I mean, to me, I understand how the CAMA rules work. There's a picture that shows that it works fine. I still question, does it work fine?
I haven't received any comment, but Mr. Cornwell is available.
Why don't we, let's finish with any questions from Ms. Wyatt, and then we'll move on to Mr. Cornwell. That might be...
I mean, I just want to make sure that the picture shows that it worked, I guess, then it's Mr. Cornwell's. But I'm not sure how well it works.
All right, we'll cover that in just a moment. Any other questions from Ms. Wyatt while she's up? All right. Does the applicant have any questions for Ms. Wyatt at this point, Ms. Bonday? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Cornwell, if we could have you...
That's the picture I was talking about.
Talk briefly, maybe respond to this.
I guess, I guess my point is, the pink is what's being requested. The blue shows what could be allowed within a different, with the CAMA setback as it relates to the pink, but I don't understand how the CAMA, because of the squeeze, if that's the exact way you should draw it out, the red lines. I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Would, is, can you respond to that more, or?
I can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you would, please.
And I'm also going to speak in support of this, so I can do all of that at once.
Sure, that'd be appropriate at this point.
The, my peer is already in. So the, so there he is, right there.
Okay. I didn't see it in the picture.
That's my photograph. That's why it wasn't in there.
Okay.
But, but it's already in, and in working with both property owners, CAMA decided what the boundaries would be, and so they've given us room to do that. Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Mark Cornwell. I live at 7532 Cedar Island Drive in Lone Cedar Village. I live at Lot 7, which is to the west of Lot 8. I'm here to speak in favor of the conditional use application. Please note that the planning board recused me from deliberations and voting on this request, and I support this for three primary reasons. First is quid pro quo. For 10 years, I was unable to put a pier behind my house because the owner of Lot 8 would not grant me the riparian waiver needed by CAMA. Once the Bondays purchased the property, we worked together to get water access for both our properties. At one point, we considered a joint project, but after looking at all the options, we concluded that that was not in the best interest of both parties. They granted me a riparian waiver, and now after 10 long frustrating years, I have a 36-foot pier behind my house which you see here. It's only fair that I support their request for similar water access. Second is the prevention of erosion of my property. Currently, the properties to the north and southwest mine of the Bondays' property have retaining walls, bulkheads, if you will. Over time, storm erosion has removed significant amounts of sound front soil from both our properties and the lot to the north owned by the Grabowskis. Though not part of this request, the Bondays plan to include a retaining wall as part of their pier project. Had this property transfer not occurred, or should this request not be approved, I will have to install a retaining wall along the west-to-east property line to prevent further erosion. Third, and most imperative, is storm damage mitigation. Roberta, could you put that picture up for me? What you see here is the destruction caused by Hurricane Irene. And just as a matter of note, below that birdhouse, that red thing you see down in the bottom corner, that's a two-person kayak, covered.
Completely.
They washed up as part of the, as part of the storm. What you don't see is how properties with piers have had less damage than shown here. With my pier and the Bondays' pier in place, subject to your approving this application, the effect of wave action and debris deposition will be lessened, if not prevented completely. It is my hope, at least, that our property's landward of the retaining walls will be preserved. Whatever you decide, I know it's in the best interest of the town in Nagshed. Thank you.
All right, does the, I'm sorry, if you would hold on just a moment. Members of the Board have any questions for Mr. Cornwell? Ms. Bonday, do you have any questions for Mr. Cornwell? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. All right, any other evidence from staff to present at this time? If not, the applicant may present evidence in support of this application at this time. You have nothing to present?
Well, we already have the application and the CAMA, and we're all going to kind of work together to make sure...
If you could please go to the podium, just to make sure we can record your comments. Thank you, ma'am.
I also plan on working with both of my neighbors so we can all be, to make sure that when the pier is done, because some things change onsite versus what is drawn, and we're going to make it sure it's all, where we can all utilize that area and protect our property from erosion.
All right, ma'am, if you would, see if the Board has any questions for you? Any questions for the applicant? All right. Anything for them, Ms. Bonday?
No.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other, is there anybody else who has been sworn that wishes to present evidence relating to this application at this time? Does the Board wish to receive any further evidence before it deliberates on this application? Or have any further questions for anybody else? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the evidentiary presentation as part of this public hearing, and I'll proceed to the Board's deliberations on the application. I remind the Board that in order to approve the application, you must make the necessary findings that are also listed in the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leidy.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask the Board, is there any discussion necessary? Commissioner Sears?
No discussion necessary.
Commissioner King, Commissioner Walters. Okay. Seeing none, then I believe a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use application with the following findings of fact. The applicant has met the requirements of the Town of Nagshed zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and other applicable ordinances. The use will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located, where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted, and the use as proposed will not overburden the firefighting capabilities and the municipal water supply capacity of the town.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve that, and you heard the full motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is Item F2, a public hearing to consider zoning text amendments pertaining to the regulation of small wireless facilities. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider Item F2, which is a proposed text amendment relating to the regulation of small wireless facilities. On this matter, excuse me, the Board sits as a legislative body, which means that sworn testimony is not necessary, and the Board has latitude to consider this proposed text amendment. We will begin the public hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by Deputy Town Manager Andy Garman.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an ordinance that we've been working on for some time now. As you saw in your packet, the reason we are looking at this ordinance is a law that was adopted last year, Session Law 2017-159, which gives towns the authority to regulate small wireless facilities. The Session Law is fairly specific as far as what we can and can't do with regards to regulating these facilities. It's fairly narrow. The intent of this is to allow the communications industry to roll out newer technologies and keep up with emerging markets in the form of smaller, more distributed systems, as opposed to a larger communications facility, such as the tower here on the Town Hall site. In most cases, these facilities would be located on existing utility poles. We do have a couple of vendors that are looking at doing some projects in the Town of Nagshed. They've already discussed those with us, and the, the projects in Nagshed would be located on utility poles. Roberta, picture. We have a picture to show you what one of these might look like, and essentially, you've got the utility pole. Maybe a little bit. This is just a, this would be a Dominion utility pole. Essentially, it's about 35 feet tall, and then if you scroll up just to the top, and zoom in maybe at the very top. At the top, you can see the utility antenna is about three feet above the top of the pole. There's some cabling along the pole, and then at the base, there's some power equipment. So it's a fairly unobtrusive design. That particular design there is less than 40 feet tall overall, and that's typical of what has been proposed so far in the Town of Nagshed. Our ordinance would provide standards and a permitting process to regulate this type of facility. It looks at whether it's in a right-of-way or on private property. The statute basically tells us that if it's in the right-of-way, it has to be approved through an administrative permitting process. If it's on private property, particularly single-family property, then we can regulate it through the conditional use permit process, and that's what we've proposed to do. The law allows us to regulate not only the antennas, but the poles themselves. We are looking at height requirements and spacing requirements, as well as some other aesthetic requirements. It allows us to establish a fee schedule for this, as well as the permitting process. It has fairly rigid timelines for our permit, review, and approval, and then it allows us to look at what happens if these facilities are abandoned, or if we need to have them relocated or removed for any particular purpose. In a nutshell, that's essentially the ordinance that we've put before you. It took us a while to get to this. We've had to, it's fairly complicated, and there are several sections of the statutes that provide different authorities to look at different aspects of this. So we've had some pretty close communications with our attorney about the standards that we've put before you, and so at this point, we've got something we think works. The planning board did look at this several times and recommended approval of what you see today, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do any members of the Board of Commissioners have questions for Mr. Garman? Yes, Mr. Fuller?
Does the state law allow us to administer a franchise fee, particularly a non-exclusive franchise, for this type of activity?
I don't believe so. It basically says that we can, we can charge for a permitting fee, and we can charge for a review fee in the case that we have to hire a technical expert to review the application, but that's more from an engineering standpoint. It doesn't allow us to establish any type of franchise or franchise fee.
Let me, let me rephrase my question. Does the law prevent us from imposing a non-exclusive franchise fee?
I would say that if it's not expressly authorized by the legislation, then it's not permitted.
And that goes back to, you know, when we discussed this with, with the attorney, that the authority granted was really narrow, and so that's how we've looked at this, is we're trying to track the statute fairly consistently.
So the answer that this Board has given is that we, by law, cannot impose a non-exclusive franchise?
That's correct. Not under this legislation, dealing with this regulatory issue.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walters?
Can you scroll up that picture up a little bit?
You want, you want to see what's on the bottom?
Could you scroll to the bottom?
Yeah.
There, it's a, basically a meter at the bottom, a power meter.
Okay.
That would be up against the pole.
And how, what is the height of that from the ground?
My guess is it would be about five, five or six feet, you know, a standard utility power meter where someone could walk up to it and read it.
I just, I, I have a comment, really, not a question, but years ago, we were looking at installing solar bollards on Dominion Power poles, and we were told that nothing could be adhered to those poles because of the public safety of the workers climbing those poles. So I just find it interesting that that is no longer the case. So maybe there's a window for us to do something good for the town regarding some low-level bollards, solar bollards, to light the sidewalks or the multi-use path. That's all.
Okay.
Good point. No, I agree.
Any other questions for Andy? All right. Anything further, Mr. Garman?
Nothing from me.
Thank you. Does the Board have any, wish to receive any other information on this before you begin your deliberations?
Well, now that Commissioners Walters had brought that up, I'd like to have an answer to that question before we deliberate.
Whether you can attach a, or what, well...
Well, I mean, the last thing this Board has heard is that nothing can be attached to those poles. That's the last thing we've heard, and I think that's material to what we're discussing.
I don't know the answer to that, that question. That's not something we examined. I don't know whether the legislation addresses that at all. I would also think it would require permission of whoever is installing the pole, whether you can attach something to their pole, too. But, but I don't know the answer to that question. We can get an answer to that if y'all, you know, y'all need that for purposes of making your decision.
There are a couple of representatives here from one of the entities looking at doing a project, and they have an arrangement with Dominion to do what it is they're doing, and they may be able to speak to that a little bit more.
As to why we can't do what we ask?
Well, as to how they're able to do what they, they've been working on, but I'm sure they can't speak to what we've been told with respect to what we wanted to do.
I'd say if, it may be useful to hear from the representatives. They may have information on the ability to attach these other facilities to the poles. Would y'all like to address the Board?
Sure.
All right. If y'all please approach the podium, tell the Board of Commissioners who y'all are, and address your remarks to the Board as a whole.
Sure. Good morning. My name's Steve Romine, local attorney for Verizon Wireless. I have with me Kelsey Chase as well, who works for Verizon and has done the background work on this request. What you have in front of you today, obviously, is the town's amendment to the ordinance in order to incorporate what state law was passed back in 2017. So to try to be narrow in my presentation, so I don't, I really don't have any broad remarks, but I'm glad to have, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. But with respect to the small cell program, we have a master agreement with Dominion Power that extends both in Virginia and in North Carolina, so we have an agreement to co-locate the small cell antennas on their poles. Now, there are national electric safety standards that apply to how the antennas are attached and the spacing requirements on that pole. With respect to your solar bollards, I'm not aware of that question, but I imagine it has to do with Dominion Power and what they're willing to allow on their structures. So I would suggest that the town may want to reengage with Dominion Power and see if that's a possibility. Certainly, the attachments that we're providing through... Certainly, the attachments that we're providing through the wireless industry has been happening for quite some time, probably a couple of years at least, you know, where we've been co-locating on utility poles. So we have a master agreement. That, and other utilities extend across the country in the same fashion. Now, with respect to passage of this ordinance, we'd like to see it enacted today if possible. We've been waiting a long time, and it's gone through several iterations of process. We've got seven or eight of these we'd like to roll out in the town to provide better coverage to both citizens, tourists, neighbors, and for business as well. It's just going to increase and improve coverage in the whole area. So it's pretty critical infrastructure for us, and we'd really like to see this move ahead as soon as possible. And I'll stand by for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Romine? Yes, Mayor Protem.
With your meter at five feet, approximately five feet, was, is there any, was there any public safety concerns with Dominion Power? Or is there a public safety, not a public safety, but a safety clause in your agreement regarding their workers should something happen when they're climbing the pole?
They typically, and Kelsey can correct me, they typically do the work on their poles. They do control the pole, so, and they are, they follow the National Electric Safety Standard Code. So with respect to the meters and the attachments, anything going on that pole, particularly when they have to replace a pole and get spacing between the lines and our antenna, that's all something they take care of. So I don't have the detail on that, and I'm not privy to the master agreement. I just know it exists, and that's what we operate under. So to answer your question, I think they follow their own national safety code standards with respect to how they access the pole and what they do. I know when we've had other systems like our macro towers that have radiation that comes off those and the back hall for microwave sometimes, there are provisions for how they work on those facilities. They have to turn them off or whatever because of safety issues. I don't know if that's responsive to your question or not.
It's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cahoon?
Question as to how it relates to the poles along Highway 12, which are right next to the multi-use path. Are there any guidelines as to where these will be located in regards to, since the poles are right on the multi-use path, how they're located? Since they appear to be fairly low to the base of the pole?
All, all of the ones that I'm aware of are in the right-of-way, are going to be in the right-of-way. And I think we had some conversation with Mr. Garmin about accommodating other uses in that area. So I think we're sensitive to that with respect to walkways and pathways, that there wouldn't be an obstruction on location of that pole. Now, if the pole is right on the sidewalk now, when they drop and swap that pole, it's possible to move it if there's a conflict there. So I think it's a case-by-case basis, and we have detailed drawings and locations. And certainly, when we go through administrative review, that would be addressed with, with the town.
Okay. I just would not want to see any impediment to the multi-use path with these boxes being located.
Yeah, we wouldn't want that to occur either because we get some complaints. So, Kelsey, I don't know if you want to come up and address that. Are you aware of any conflicts on any of these existing poles that we're applying? Do you want to come up? Kelsey's involved in, you know, citing them and the locations, and just introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Chase. I'm a representative from Verizon Wireless. All of these designs are vetted through Dominion, and they're part of that master agreement that Steve mentioned earlier. The design is all pretty much uniform across all the markets that we've worked in and installed these. So as far as interference with the path or anything like that, Dominion wouldn't probably want that. We go through, like, the citing process with Dominion, and we do drive-bys with all of the poles to see what poles are best suited for us, and then if that would work best for them. So sometimes, we like a certain pole for our purposes, and they're not willing to allow us to use it. So that's probably something that would be brought up with Dominion when they're looking at, you know, this multi-use path, and they're not going to want anything to obstruct any movement there. Additionally, we are not allowed by Dominion to co-locate on certain poles. So there's several poles on Route 12 that we aren't allowed to go on anyway. So those meters wouldn't be there, or our meters wouldn't be there.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have an agreement with Charter or Spectrum? Since a lot of the poles on Highway 12 Dominion has abandoned and Charter Spectrum still maintains, or supposedly maintains?
Not that I'm aware of. That may be something that Verizon looks at in the future. I'm not aware of an agreement with them at this time, though.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Chase or Mr. Romine? All right. Anything further from, from y'all? Mr. Romine, anything further?
Just that we appreciate the opportunity to be here and work with Mr. Garmin. We'd like to see if we can get our project underway. We're hopeful to get it built as soon as possible. So we appreciate any consideration you can give us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to clarify one thing. Mr. Garmin made a good point in response to Mr. Commissioner Fuller's question about the franchise fee. I think this is different, but the, but to the extent that one of these facilities was going to be placed on a town-owned structure, the town would have the right to charge a lease and require a rental payment for that. But I don't think that's exactly what you were talking about. I think you were talking about something that was more comprehensive than that.
It was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question before we close?
Yes, sir.
With regard to timing, you mentioned, and I probably need to ask you to return to the podium if you don't mind. You mentioned getting the project going as soon as possible. Is that an indication that if the ordinance was approved and the process moved along, that there's a possibility of construction on poles along the multi-use path as early as this summer or late, late summer?
Timelines on these are really delicate, so I'll ask Kelsey to...
The subject has changed.
Yes. I need to double-check that we don't have any currently located along the path, but I, construction would just roll out as funds become available. They, I work with the real estate end of Verizon, and construction dictates how we're able to move forward with the actual construction. So my role basically takes us through permitting, and then it's sort of out of my hands. It is part of Verizon's goal, though, to have them constructed this year. I know that they've been anxious to get these sites up and running for a while, so this will probably be a priority for them. Outside of that, I can't really speak to, you know, when they want to actually move forward, but that's their intent at this time, is to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay. I would, just building on Commissioner Cahoon's question about the location, with regard to construction activities, the town would be very sensitive to construction activities along the path, especially during the summer season. So just carry that back, if you would, please.
Okay. I will. Thank you.
I would just echo both Mayor Protem and Walters' question about, and concern about Dominion Power poles and Commissioner Fuller's concern about the answer as to whether or not other things are going to be allowed. It appears Dominion is trying to work with people that are going to be paying them, but have not shown the interest in working with the town in a public service of trying to put more lighting along the path. And that seems to be a little bit of a double-edged sword there of their public interest. And the other thing is, I echo the mayor's comments, I would hate to see any construction commenced during the summer season and in any way impede traffic on the path, because I'm going to bring that up shortly later in my agenda, that I would oppose vehemently any blocking of the path for construction at this time.
I think it's unlikely, based on where we are in the summer, that we'll be getting going that fast. You know, initially, we thought we'd be further along, so we'll carry that back. We understand the sensitivity on that.
Because that would also apply to next summer or any time, any time that construction would occur.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any further questions for Mr. Romine before he steps away? All right. Thank you, members. Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this proposed text amendment? Do you wish to hear anything further from staff? Anything further, Mr. Garmin, you wish to present?
I was just clarifying with Kelsey that the, they did submit preliminary drawings of their projects to us, and all the, I believe all the projects along NC 12 were on the west side of NC 12 and not on the ocean side.
May I ask Andy a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Andy, in those preliminary drawings, is that potential missile on top of the pole secured to a wind rating?
It would have to be. It would have to meet the building code requirements. Sure. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Garmin? All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Board members, I'll start at the other end this time. Commissioner Fuller, any further comment?
The only thing is, that I would just note is, this is a non-exclusive franchise, so anybody could put one up if they can come to some terms with NC Power, or I soon can put one up anywhere. Not on a power pole, but just anywhere, as I understand it. And I just want to make sure that we're all aware that, at least if I'm not right, that anybody can put one of these up anywhere, as long as it meets the ordinance.
Your caution as well taken. We're considering an ordinance, not a specific company and application. So this does open this to whatever complies with the ordinance.
And that's why... That was my point about asking about franchise.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I have nothing else to add.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, I think my concerns have been stated already.
Okay. Mr. Sears?
Nothing.
Great. Thank you. All right. Having heard the evidence and had time for discussion, a motion would be in order.
If I may help?
Yes, please.
Appropriate motions would be motions to approve, as presented, to deny, to table, to a date certain or to, or for a specific period of time. Those would all be appropriate motions at this time.
Also, nothing being said is an appropriate action as well, correct?
It's a failure to act, but it's, it may be the result of the hearing.
But it's an appropriate alternative.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no motion, Mr. Leidy, I'll ask for your help. Then this, this issue would, what would be the resolution of this issue if we fail to get a motion and fail to act?
It would be essentially, it would have the effect of a denial for the time being. It would not preclude the board from reconsidering this, consistent with your rules of procedure. The, you know, I know that there was one question that we were unable to answer, and if the information from that question would help the board in its deliberations, you might, then a motion to table would be appropriate to give us time to come back with that, that specific information. Tabling does not guarantee approval or denial. I mean, it just, it just gives the board additional time, you know, following this public hearing to receive additional information before taking action.
Okay. All right. It is an extensive ordinance, so I'll ask the board one more time if there's any, if there's any motion forthcoming.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To, to table this to a subsequent meeting. I'm not yet specific on that until we can find some answers to the questions about what we can and cannot do on a Dominion Power pole.
Okay. All right. You've heard the motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to table this action to a future meeting. Is there any further discussion?
Only that either the attorney or the manager please bring back the answers from Dominion Power in a written form so that we can consider those.
Thank you. I'll ask, in light of that, is there any value to asking a representative to be present to answer questions?
That'd be great as well.
Okay. Thank you. You've heard, then, the motion, the second, and the specific request for additional information. Is there anything else from the board? Hearing none, then a vote on that motion to table would be in order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is old business items tabled from the previous meeting, consideration of amendments to Chapter 44 Utilities. Cliff or Andy?
So at your June 20 meeting, you considered modifications to the fee schedule for the replacement of the water credit unit with the system development fee. You also adopted the system development fee analysis that was prepared by the engineer, establishing the impact fee for water that we can charge. This ordinance amendment essentially codifies the system development fee, removes water credit unit as the fee we are charging now after July 1, and replaces it with the system development fee. It prescribes what that fee is and how to calculate the fee. It also determines how we treat existing water credit units in terms of providing credits for prepaid units or those that have active units that we've essentially been crediting in the past based on lots that were being redeveloped. Essentially, the ordinance is before you. We can answer any questions that you have. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay. I do have a question. If, if this ordinance were not to pass, then this would reopen a part, portion of our budget discussion that we just had and approved, correct?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Comment?
Only that I appreciate all the work that's been done, but I know that the town of Kill Devil Hills did an analysis of theirs as well. And I'd like for us to really get some information on how they arrived at their analysis, because they came up with a totally different aspect of what they're going to charge than we did that kind of kept in place a lot of their fee schedule. They may not call it a water impact unit or so forth, but the amount of money generated was very similar to what they were doing before, whereas ours has dropped substantially. And I'd really like to get an analysis of how they did what they did in order for us to look at it, because we're dropping dramatically the water impact unit, and they did not.
And that... That's something that we, we talked about. We touched on it a little bit in the budget workshop.
I remember that.
That the, getting an appraisal of our water system would be the next thing we could do to, to improve the, the fee that we can charge.
Well, I know that they didn't go out and hire a consultant to do that, but I'd like to get preliminarily what they did and how they did it before we took another step.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to what we're, action we're taking, but I'd like for us to keep on working and evolve with this.
Understood.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I agree with Commissioner Cahoon.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Walters? Okay. Having heard the additional explanation and had time to ask questions and discuss, then a motion would be in order.
I make a motion that we adopt the system development fee as presented.
Thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the system development fee analysis as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your help with those items, Mr. Leidy. Appreciate that.
Sure.
All right. The next item on our agenda is new business, and that is committee reports. And I will ask if there are any commissioners who have committee reports to bring forth? No? All right. Seeing none... All right, seeing none, we will go to the next item, which is, and perhaps the thing to do is to move this to the end of the agenda, given where we are time-wise, which is 11 minutes after 10. We have a request for a closed session. So if I may, we did adopt this agenda, but if I may, we'll move that to the end of the meeting. Everybody's in agreement? So the next item would be Item J, Items Refused From the Town Manager. Cliff?
Nothing.
Okay, good. Moving right along. The next would be the Board of Commissioners Agenda Items. And I'll start at the left this time with Commissioner Sears. Okay, Commissioner Cahoon?
One, I'd like for the board to take into consideration at some future date, the amount that we charge for tickets on the multi-use path. It appears that $50 is not deterring anyone, as well as stepped-up enforcement of people that block the path, especially for days at a time. But obviously, $50 is a cheap cost of doing business for some of our contractors and so forth. And while I'm very business-friendly, I'm also very public safety-conscious. And this time of year, people should not be parking on the path, and if $50 is not a deterrent, I'd like for the board to consider increasing that.
Good, thank you. And I do note that we have had notification from the manager of stepped-up enforcement, but the consideration of the cost of a fraction, I think, is a good discussion for us to have going forward. Commissioner Walters?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the town and all of the staff, especially, you know, public safety, you know, fire and police for the fireworks last night on the pier. And also Andy and Loving McCann for, once again, allowing that to occur on the pier. The fireworks were awesome. Everybody on the beach was having a great time. And I just think it's one of the, well, one of the more warm and fuzzy things that we do. But it certainly does make families really happy and want to return, and they're shopping at businesses and, you know, bringing their pizza and their chicken and everything on the beach to see the fireworks. So thank you all for your hard work in making sure that everyone is safe while they have a big time.
Great, all right. Yes, I'll echo that as well. Commissioner Fuller?
Two things, but I want to echo the two commissioners about last night, and then it's also on the multi-use path as well. I mean, I think that's a big issue, but two issues. And one might be procedural and something that maybe I don't understand, but my, the way I understand things is, I would like to bring up an issue for proposed ordinance, and my understanding is I'm supposed to bring it up here and get consensus of the board before it comes back to the board. So that's one of the things I'm trying to do right now. And that is, I'd like to ask staff with the board's concurrence that we bring back a proposed ordinance for consideration that would limit the signage on tents on the beach to 144 square inches, that signage only be allowed on two sides of the tent, and the effective date would be January 19. That's one. The other one I would like to bring up is that we allow tents on the beach with no signage whatsoever. So those two ordinances for discussion at our August board meeting. So I guess that's my request of the board to be able to ask staff to do that, if y'all would concur with that.
Okay, so the request is to concur to put that discussion on the next agenda for directing staff to develop the ordinance. And so I'll ask the commissioners. Commissioner Sears, you concur to bring that forward? Commissioner Cahoon?
I would concur to bring it forward expeditiously.
Okay. Commissioner Walters?
I don't mind bringing it forward, but I do, I do have, without seeing it, it's hard to know. But I just have a hard time understanding implementation as far as who's going to be the tent police, who's going to go out and measure. There was a big Hurley tent beside me yesterday. You know, there are all kinds of tents, so we are a tourism-based economy, and I just have concerns about the things we police, so...
Yeah, the discussion could lead into a discussion about not allowing tents.
I understand, so I concur with bringing it forward. I do have reservations, so...
And if I may add, my concerns, and ultimately what I hope that the ordinance would be able to address, is whether there are any differences between the kind of corporate logos like Hurley, as opposed to any other form of commercial speech that might be on a tent, and how that would be addressed. And the second would be any differentiation, if possible, between anything that is on a tent and anything that is on any other piece of beach equipment, like a chair, a cooler, an umbrella, our portageons at the beach accesses, and anything else that has any form of advertising logo or anything else, and how that would be differentiated.
And I absolutely agree and understand that. And I think that's why it's important that the town attorney be involved in those discussions and presents. I wouldn't want something presented to us that we know won't pass legal muster.
Great, all right, same.
First thing, I have one more. Which, and it kind of goes back to the other, but I'm in sort of a group email with a number of people on some things. And one of the issues that's a pretty hot-button issue out there right now is the proposed increase in water rates. And I would just encourage us and staff, particularly through any public notification we have, to kind of get out in front of this issue, let people know what the water rate increase is, and the reasons for the water rate increase as soon as possible through any mechanisms we have.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could I ask a question to follow up? I know at one point the manager was putting together a list of the top water users. Have you had a meeting with those users?
Not yet. No, ma'am, I've got the, I've got that list put together. Was looking at timing and whether or not July was the right time to bring those businesses.
Well, the timing is before we increase, not way after they get their first bill.
Yes, ma'am. I will expedite that meeting.
If I may be so bold as to say that, we were trying to get in front, not behind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff has heard those two items then for direction for the next agenda and that, the meeting and other communications. Are there any other items? I have none. Any other business to come before the board? In that case, we will move to Items Referred To and Presentations From Town Attorney. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd ask that the board enter closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to discuss the Richardson litigation, as well as the other pending beach nourishment easement condemnation cases.
Okay, thank you. Having heard that request, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session per those, per the General Statute cited by Mr. Leidy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The board has returned to open session. I'll ask Mr. Leidy to report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The board did discuss with the town attorney, the Richardson and other beach nourishment easement condemnation cases did give instructions to the town attorney, but no other actions were taken.
Thank you. With that, a motion to adjourn to our UDO workshop would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Very good, thank you.